I'm gonna call this August 18th Vance County Work Session into order. First up, we're gonna have Sheriff Curtis Byrne. Let us pray. Most heavenly Father, we come to give you glory, praise, and honor. Thank you for this day. Thank you for this gathering. Thank you for this occasion, God. We ask that you give us the wisdom and the knowledge to direct your order, God, your situations. And God, we just ask that everything be done in decent and in order. And at the end of the day, all is well in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you. Excuse me. Everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
Thank you for the opportunity allowed me to speak before this work session. Have a lot of concerns regarding budgeting and finances for the Vance County Sheriff's Office and the Detention Center, more so right now at this point in time. The Vance County Sheriff's Office, we have lost valuable seasonal employees. Losing a deputy after two years is understandable. Maybe they're following career path, going to a different agency. But when you start losing investigators and school resource officers, that's a wake-up call. These people cannot be replaced overnight. It takes a minimum of two years requirement to be a school resource officer. And the training and the education that an investigator have, losing a lieutenant who led the investigation unit and three other seasonal investigators has really been an impact to Vance County Sheriff's Office and the community at large. They're left because of salaries. One left because of salaries and work, a lot less work in the agency that he went to. So I have stats where Lieutenant Bishop, he went $5,000 salary right there in Warren County. Marisol Labarre, she went to Henderson Police Department. She got a $15,000 increase. Detective Burns left about a month, two months ago. Got a $17,000 increase with the Henderson Police Department. Deputy Hallgrove School Resource Officer got a $16,000 increase to go back to Oxford. People, I will say this. I've been here four decades. I'm not here to throw any punches. I'm here to make a plea. I mean, I am here to make a plea. I'm facing a crisis. Y'all know about the fentanyl and opioids problem that we have in Vance County. Commissioner Perry asked me, do I have enough help? No, I do not have enough help. I reached out to the State Bureau of Investigation. When I was back there, I just got the phone with Director Chip Hawley, and he's gonna try to send me some help. But their primary job is to assist other agencies, but he's gonna try to send me some help until we can get back to fully staffed. Your sheriff office, it's your first line of defense in the county, public safety. We running into danger when everybody's fleeing away. We were the rubber meets the pavement every day. When other people are at home doing inclement weather, holidays, we're working. Yes, that's the profession we chose, but we have some dedicated people who do their job, and we got to support them. If not, I'm going to continue to lose them. I got some more in the threshold that I'm holding on to, and I'm asking them, please give me the opportunity. I'm going to meet with the Board of Commissioners. I'm pleading. I'm working for you. I'm fighting for you. If I don't fight for my people, nobody else will. And I just ask for y'all to, you know, to come to a resolution, figure out collectively. I don't expect y'all to have a decision today, but we got to come to the table. We got to figure out something quick, fast, and in a hurry, and we can't wait till the pay study to next July. We cannot. I cannot. Decisions in Vance County cannot. If I was to have a murder today in Vance County, I'm down the creek, up the creek, whatever you call it, without a paddle, because I don't have the experienced people that I had that left my office in the last three to six months. We gonna make it. We gonna get there. But the citizens of Vance County deserve more from the Vance County Sheriff's Office. They deserve more from the Board of Commissions. They deserve more from the elected sheriff. But I can't do it without the funding and hiring people. I got a young lady in Warren County who wants to come up here. $2,000. I don't think I hold enough for coming up here. If I get too more $1,000, she'll come up. She's a six-year veteran with Warren County Sheriff's Office. She wants to come work in Vance County. I got people that want to come here and work, but I can't meet them at the gate with what their actions start. I'm asking y'all to brainstorm this with me. I can't figure it out by myself.
Mitchell did a proposal several months back. Did that ever make it?
On progression?
Mm-hmm.
Progression?
Yes.
You want me to speak on it? It went to the HR Committee last October or November, and that was brought back to the board, and you all decided to do one-time bonuses across the board. And then we discussed a progression plan, not just for the sheriff's office, but county-wide. But financially, that's something that we would have to discuss, because what he recommended, we had conversations, but we would need to have an outside consultant or HR take a look at what, what I want to say, Pig, what Mitchell recommended. So we did not support that at that time because of the pay structure and the recommendations.
Okay. I know that that progression gave people a career path, if I remember when I looked at it.
So not necessarily a career path, but it allowed them to move within their salary range, because we don't have merit increases. We only have COLAs. The county probably hasn't done merit increases 15 plus 20 years. And I understand that, but we do need to move towards some type of plan in which employees can move through their pay plan, because right now, everybody's stuck at the minimum. And so what the sheriff was mentioning, when he said, you know, we have the young lady from Warren County, the issue with that person, thank you, the issue with that person is that we have, he has current staff members that are not at the salary that she wants, so we would have to bring those employees up for equity purposes to bring her in at a higher salary. And so, of course, that comes with a price tag. So that's the issue.
Can we get Mitchell's plan and the cost of the estimated cost of that?
So the cost was like $100,000, but it's a lot of things that he did not take in consideration. So I would recommend that HR, as well as myself and Jeremy and Stephanie, look at that and give you the real numbers before we move forward with the progression plan, for sure. But yeah, we can do that.
So you have to replace a major position as well?
I forgot. I didn't mention him, and I don't know what he's making. He's gonna work for the state to set the position with training standards, and yeah, I didn't include him. Yes.
And so, and we were hoping that the pay study would kind of alleviate some of that, but since we decided not to implement the pay study, and even so with the pay study, I think the consultants were only recommending a one-pay grade increase, but that's because they did not add the city of Henderson. The city of Henderson made some, when they increased the minimum to $60,000, he's gonna continue to lose people regardless, because we can't pay 60. We just can't afford that. But when you look at Nash County, I think their minimum is 57, 58. So we are, we are behind. I do agree. But a big bump, I don't know that it still would address the issues that you have, so we need to have conversations on something other than just increasing the minimum. I know we had some conversations about some type of incentive plan in which someone comes in the door. If you have a four-year degree related to that field, give them 5%. If you have military experience. And so I think Mitchell said that at one point, he thought y'all had something in place, but our greatest at the board has never adopted it. So I think you sent something to Mitchell that Edgecombe County had in place for him to work off of, but I don't think Mitchell ever worked on it. So we've given the template or the work to start on it. We just need to get that so we can get it to the board to increase the minimums in the door for certain people.
All I know is that I'm continuing to lose people, and they're going because of salary. And if we don't do something, it's gonna dwindle down to we're not having any law enforcement to respond to the community needs.
The school resource office, they went to another county to work as a school resource?
Yes, ma'am. I had two. I had one to go to Halifax County and had one go to Grandma County.
Yeah, and the one for?
Resource officers?
School resource officer. I lost.
As a school resource officer?
Went to other schools.
Yeah, and the young lady that went to, a young man or young person, young lady went to Oxford is like $70,000, I think, right?
Yeah, $70,000.
Yeah. Seventy.
But you gotta, he has 20, 25 years of experience as a law enforcement officer.
And I think the issue we have in Sheriff, because you said they deserve more, and God knows, we understand that. We understand it for hearted. But I think the issue, we spending so much money into the county jails for repairs, and I think that's the issue.
I understand.
And I understand, but it's like, like I said, I know everybody understand, we got more than one entities that we have to pay into, but I just think, and I guess that money is the issue, you know, when we were doing budget, we had, I mean, everybody, some people satisfied, some people dissatisfied because of what we couldn't do. And I just think that the issue, because you know, you know, with the board, I don't believe we don't want to get the people up the park, because we need, we need them. But I just think when we looking at the issue is because we are spending so much money into the county, under the detention center, keeping things abreast. And so it's hard, it's a hard place that we got, that we in position that we in right now because of what we doing money-wise, putting into the detention center. Because I know it's money and it's not us.
To hear my plea and realize what I'm facing and what, you know, people, the community asking about service, and they need services. When they call 911, they expect us to respond. And then if I don't have the people to respond or properly investigate cases, and especially with the fentanyl, death by distribution case. We had one last night, 30-year-old man, 30 years old.
What about the, I think the last time, if I'm not mistaken, that they said that you still got people in training? There was still got people that has not taken position?
At the detention center? Yeah, I have two in training now. We got nine in the threshold, so once we get those.
You got nine?
Nine, yes, nine in threshold become detention officers. And what we'll do, we'll send four at a time. We can't afford to send all nine at one time. Won't be anybody at the jail, but we'll send four at a time to get trained. And that's a six-weeks process, so once those, we got two in training right now. Yes, ma'am.
Renee, explain something to me. You say, when he said that they've left and gone to Warren County, like for a $7,000 raise, we can't bring somebody from Warren County because of $2,000 raise because of where they placed on the salary scale. Your connection dealing with other counties, how, what do they do in terms of somebody going, going to their agency and can get a $7,000 raise? What happens with their pay grade stuff?
What you mean?
You know, he can't get somebody for $2,000 to come here.
But that's just based off compression and internal equity, just because most of his deputies are, are they kind of new, kind of sort of, maybe? What you think?
My deputies? No, most of them, no. At least two years' experience with one one.
Okay, so I think the issue that he's having, the county hasn't done any performance pay for years. We've only been doing COLA, and there were some years in which I guess employees didn't get anything, so it creates compression. So when you have employees that are active employees, and you're trying to bring in a new employee that's already making the salary that your current employees are making, you can't bring in anybody over than what you're, you know, you want to take care of home first, if that makes any sense.
Okay, I understand what you're saying there, but when you're dealing with other counties, what are they doing when they bring somebody in that's gonna make, that person that's coming in, that's leaving here, gonna make $7,000 more, they fit into their skill, their salary skill?
Yeah, you want to answer it.
So typically, sometimes it depends on what that person, the qualifications they have or certification they have. They may have an incentive plan in place where I can bring you in above minimum 10% increase because you have this, this, or this. So we don't really know what the $7,000 pay increase entails.
Right.
Going from one this agency to another, because Edgecombe had the same.
You can leave here and go and get $7,000 someplace. Seventeen someplace else?
Yeah, two people, over 17, 16 to 17.
And so in some other counties or?
How are they able to justify that?
Well, some other counties or entities may even match that, but they do equity adjustments for the staff that are currently there, so you don't have any equity issue. So it just depends. Sometimes people may say, hey, I want to come work for you, but I need $7,000 more dollars. We know we can't do that here, so people will decline our offers all the time, and that's what's happening. So it just, every entity is different, so.
So give me an idea.
Just like our salary thing.
That person that left and went for $17,000 more dollars.
Commissioner Kelly.
How was that person making?
I left here 33 years, 33 and a half years of service in Vance County when I retired. Now, how, explain this to me. I'm still trying to figure it out. How I did not make top pay, but I've done 33 and a half years as a captain of Vance County Sheriff's Office, never made top pay. Why are you gonna set a top pay if a person can't reach a top pay?
That's right. He's right. And most employees should really be at, at least at the midpoint, which is the middle of your range by year five. And our employees are nowhere near that.
And that goes back to progression pay.
Yeah, and we just don't have it in place.
Only way an employee can get a raise is by COLA.
Yeah.
And there is no progression. There's no career path where you progress up by an evaluation or things of that sort. All we can get a pay raise is through a COLA here, unless you're promoted.
Yeah, and understandably so. We're a Tier One County. We just don't have the revenue to support it. It's unfortunate, but.
What are other Tier One counties doing?
Same thing we're doing, trying to keep people.
And losing them too.
Absolutely. And let's just have this conversation. This is just not Vance County. It's a lot of counties that are dealing with the same issues that the sheriff is dealing with, so it's not just us.
So evidently, these people are not going to a Tier One county if you're making $17,000, $16,000 up.
Warren County is a Tier One county?
Yeah, Warren is Tier One.
We lost somebody. How many?
Now, I think she went to Halifax.
Five thousand.
Five thousand?
Yes, ma'am. And then the $7,000 one, I think she went to Halifax.
Yeah.
And of course, and also I think this part about Halifax is that I believe that they have a grant, I think they're getting for that position.
Halifax County Schools, when I was there, Halifax County Schools had a grant that came from the state that allowed them to pay their SROs more. Now, once that funding is gone, her salary will go back down, but the funding has to be, be in first, so.
All I ask for y'all to do is, you know, let's stop tabling and stuff. Let's do something about it. Let's move forward. If not, like I said, the sheriff's office is gonna suffer. The citizens in Vance County are going to suffer. We're not, I will no longer have the means to support the county needs regarding to law enforcement if they continue to leave at the rate they're leaving.
So what's your?
And they are going to leave.
So what's your recommendation, though? Like, what do you recommend?
I mean, I understand the tax basis here in Vance County. I do. You know, if we have rainy day funds, I said we had to dip into it, but we got, this is a serious crisis that the Board of Commissions don't fund the sheriff's office to keep good valuable employees. This is very serious.
Wasn't there some legislation proposed to assist Tier One counties or rural counties? And?
That's County Manager's question. I want to know.
For some reason, I was thinking I read something where there was a thing to assist rural counties in bringing the salaries into line. It was some kind of grant program. I think it might have been federal.
I've never heard of that. And so would it be, since salaries are recurring costs, would it be a forever thing?
That's, I don't know the details on it. I just, I read it somewhere.
Something about some additional federal funding to bring salaries up?
I'm thinking. I'm not totally sure.
It's like a block grant or something? Yeah.
I've never heard of that before, just because salaries are recurring, and we would need the revenue after the funding is gone. But I mean, I can do some research.
But I hand you all a sheet, what I believe is going to happen if we don't act, if we don't act immediately. Increase in crime and violence, erosion of trust and security, collapse of social order, difficulty in responding to emergencies, impact of business and economy. You know, if I was to bring a business in, the first thing I want to know is your school system, your hospital, and your law enforcement crime in your area.
She asked you a question.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear.
She asked you a question a few minutes ago in terms of what the ideal situation, we know we can't do the ideal situation. So if you had to meet her halfway, Jeremy and the County Manager, what would you, what would you like to see? What would you, I don't know whether to put you on the spot or not, but you need to sit down with them and work out a plan as to what you would like to see if they said, okay, you can't have, you can't have, you can't have the top of the line, but let's say if we meet you middle way, what would you like to have?
I would like to sit down and discuss. I trust our County Manager. I would like to sit down and have discussion, the discussion with her about numbers that I can track, attract and retain the personnel that I have.
Just coming for us.
I mean, I know, I know it won't be $60,000.
We gotta do something. If there's not something, if there's not something that's down the proposal, then we're right back to discussion.
Yes.
Discussion, discussion is good, but at the same time, we need to have a, some type of plan by you and this group to say, this will, this will save, this will help us get through the crisis.
Yes.
But what I'm hearing as well is that if we raise the sheriff department, we gotta do it across.
And we don't have to. I would recommend that we look at other staff.
Wilson County just done, and they only done the sheriff officers, sheriff officers, first responders only.
Yeah, and I would say we all rate, we raised the salaries for DSS as well, and that was just its own department, so yeah, we could do that.
This is a crisis.
It doesn't have to be everybody else, ma'am. I advocate for everybody, but I would prefer everybody, but I understand his situation as well.
Mitchell's plan, 10, dealt with a whole lot of these issues, the compaction, the people coming in with experience. There were some increases for that.
Yeah, but I, but still, you talking about the pay progression plan that back last year. I trust Mitchell, but Mitchell was not a HR professional, so, yeah, but we could look at something like that. Yeah, right, yeah.
But the plan, based on the numbers he was showing me, we looked at some individual salaries and so forth, and it would have taken those people with experience and given them some increases, and those people coming in, the ability after five years to have a, to be, you've got to be at a certain level by five years, assuming you're performing.
So I think that goes back to a progression plan. So I think that would be something that, you know, as the manager said, I would explore across the board. If we're gonna do progressions, for one, we need to progress for everybody. Because I hate for, you know, we progress and do this for the sheriff's office, and then we have vacancies over here, and we're back on the same, that department head is saying the same thing, you know, so.
I do eat an elf.
So, one bite at a time.
So Sheriff, are you talking about everybody in your department or certain people or certain, like those that?
A lot, a lot of sheriff officers, you know, the sheriff has two divisions. One is law enforcement, the other one is correction. They both follow up under the sheriff's office. A lot of sheriffs across the state are paying the detention officers the same thing. They're paying their deputies. They are, because, I mean, the duties and responsibilities, those, I wouldn't be a detention officer. I don't think a lot of you in here would be a detention officer. They put up with a lot.
But I'm talking about immigration. You got a certain, if you would like to see, if we can do something.
For years, our administration, our administration, our administration people have not been paid what they're qualified to do. They hold some serious positions and licenses that they've never been paid to do.
And I'm not discrediting that. I'm just saying if we.
No, I would not want to leave them out of it, no.
I'm just saying if we trying to fix some of the major, like I said, I'm not discrediting, because you said that we had a plan. I'm just saying, is it everybody? Was it certain people?
It was just for the sheriff's office. It was for your sworn personnel only. Remember, we raised the minimum for detention when we put the emergency pay policy in place in April. This already been done.
Ask the question.
So if you're talking about recommending raising the minimum, I mean, doing the minimum for detention and for deputies, we definitely can't afford that, because your deputies are at 46 and your detention officer at 40. So we would have to look, I would recommend we only look at sworn right now, because we can't afford to do both.
And I understand you, I understand, and I'm not blaming this board for, but that's, like I said, that's been the history.
I know.
The history for, this is why we're here today, because of the history of what the board had done in the past. And we can no longer continue to operate it, because other divisions, other agencies, other counties are doing things differently, and we still behind the eight ball on this. And for your answers, yes, I am, but I understand if you only done it for the sheriff's office. And then maybe in a year or so, do it for the detention center to bring them up closer. But right now, yeah, where the rubber meets the pavement, the crisis that the Vance County Sheriff's Office, yes, we desperately need it today.
And I guess.
And Mr. Kelly, and that number, I have a number. You asked me for a number. I'll give you a number. I'm looking at 55. You asked me. And 55, is that just no experience at all in the door, 55? No, it's always.
No, but you gotta have a minimum.
$1,500 difference. So, so 55 is your minimum?
That's what you would recommend for your deputies.
55, yes.
So let me, and let me just, I just, I have to say this. I have to. So I always want, also want us to consider and think about the process that we're going through with renovating your, the current facility, right? But remember, that facility has to be staffed while we're doing renovations, because once the renovations are done, we need to be staffed per the state, right? So think about the money that we're spending, fully staffing the detention center, and then we're talking about raising salaries.
But if you don't have the staff to put there, if they all gone, the state not gonna let you open a new facility.
I know, but you know, you and I had a conversation. You said, well, Renee, it's not always about salary. So tell me what else would it would be about?
Right now, it's about salaries. People are leasing for crazy money.
But we don't have crazy money.
Well, we're gonna have to figure out something. People are leaving, and they're going to continue to leave.
And I don't, and I don't think that, I'm gonna be honest with you, I don't think that raising your minimum by $2,000 or $3,000 is gonna help you.
No, that's not.
And I understand you wanting 55, but I don't know where we're gonna get 55 from.
Is it now? He said 55.
It's 46, eight, maybe? Forty-six?
Forty-six, two, sixty-six.
Forty-six, two, okay. Deputies.
Deputy sheriff. You know.
It's Warren, and what is Grandma?
It's on your.
It's on that list.
And can you email that to me, Sheriff, so I can send it to the commissioners?
So Sheriff, is it gonna be starting pay this issue or compression? Franklin is 55, Grandma 52, Nash 55, Wake 56, Person's 54, Western Counties, Brunswick County is 55, Whipps County, yes, 48, but.
We just have Warren.
Most counties are at 55 or above, 50 or above. We just don't have the.
Warren County is just a 45.
Yeah, Warren, yeah, right next door.
Is it starting salaries or compression we need to, we need to address? My opinion, you need starting salaries. Starting salaries is gonna attract people.
How many vacancies you got? How many deputies? You got 11, right?
I have 12. Would the major make 12?
Okay, so it's like, no deputies, like row deputies.
That's 12 sworn positions.
Okay, so 20% essentially of your staff. I remember me and Pig talking about that. Okay.
So we can attract, but I guess my mindset, I don't want to adjust compression. Because starting salary is gonna be starting salary, but I want to retain my employees as well. If you do just compression, I don't know what that's gonna do with start, attracting people to come here.
So remember, we sent you the pay plan in which if a person has experience, then our Greta can bring recommendations to me on bringing a person in higher. We can do that. That's not a problem, but.
But we tried, then we only talking about $2,000.
I know, but you have compression issues. That's why we couldn't bring that person in higher. So if you address your compression, compression, then we can bring deputies in higher. That's what I'm saying. I think compression should be addressed first before we look at the minimum.
Sir?
Do you want to explain it? Okay. So compression is, let's say, for example, let's, you want to be a deputy for a few minutes, Mr. Kelly? Okay, so you're, so let's just say you're a deputy. You've been here 10 years with Vance County, right? Your salary is 50. Halifax County is releasing an employee. They want to come work for the sheriff. They have eight years of experience, but they're currently making more money than what you, more money than what you're making with 10 years of experience. The sheriff wants to bring in this person higher than what you're making. I would need to bring your salary up to match that person, if that makes any sense. So compression, pretty much that's what it is. Yeah, so that's the issue that he has right now. And that's just because for years, no one has been able to move through their salary pay grade, because we don't have any way to move through right now, unfortunately.
Dealing with compression allows you hire people with experience.
Correct.
Rather than.
At a higher rate.
Starting salary of what a new person is just going through BLET.
Yeah.
So you're able to get experience and more qualified.
Y'all saying we support compression?
Yes.
Y'all say that's the best.
I think that's what we have to address first before raising minimums.
So, so they would knock out, if me and you doing the same job, you got eight years, you got more experience than I have, so I can bring you in, regardless of, I've been here 10 years, but you still got, it's more educational?
It depends. So you look at education and experience. You look at all of it, yeah. Just don't be education experience, and this will take some time, because you know, we need all of your deputies' applications. We need everything.
And I guess in regards to compression, also understand that the incentive pay will also need to be implemented too, I believe. So you can't move that person with eight years with the degree up higher than it's matter of eight years, no degree. So you have the compression and incentive, in my opinion. I understand the compression, which you're saying to the best of my ability, what Mitchell and I went over, but I need, we need something today. We got, we got to act on some. If you want to implement compression down the road, but we need something today. We got to have, I mean, I'm not asking y'all to vote today, but what I'm saying today, we need to move this, don't need to be table and discuss three, six, nine, must have, I need something today. And that's my plea.
We gotta find some money today.
I understand that. I appreciate y'all listening to me and.
Well, we understand. We really do understand the situation, but like I said, it's.
So can you do me a favor?
Yes, ma'am.
I know you don't have Mr. Mitchell anymore, but do you have anybody on your staff that can pull all of the applications and certifications for all of your deputies?
Major Bullock is coming back in to help me.
Okay, if he can get that information to us, we can start looking at it. It ain't gonna be today, though. It takes a while.
That's what I'm saying, but I need something today.
I know, but we would have to have data in order to give a today answer. That's the issue, so.
All right, I'll get started on it immediately. Any more questions for me? I thank y'all for your time. Appreciate it.
So I can send that to them?
Ma'am.
Can you email me your?
I'll email you everything else.
All right.
Y'all have a good evening.
Thank you.
Okay, y'all, so the next thing on the agenda, um, is just to have a conversation in which you all want your opioid committee to look like. Um, I believe when Yolanda was chair, she appointed, um, was herself, former Commissioner Austin and Ms. Fains on the committee. And we've had several conversations, um.
Can we do something before we go there?
Yes, sir.
We possess this issue thing in terms of what you're, what, can you close the door for us?
Uh, we can't, we can't, we can't, no, let's just talk about it.
What do we need to do?
It's what he needs to do, I mean, I know this is live, but he needs to, we've recommended more than one thing, more than one time, and they have not put anything in place. And I'm not gonna do it for him.
Get beyond that then.
That means we would have to do it. And I don't have any authority over the sheriff's office, I don't mind helping, but I'm not gonna do it for him, I can't.
And I've sent incentive plan to him, I said, y'all, look, look at this.
I mean, this, seriously, this is the same department that has nine wrecked vehicles, and we were told last week that the vehicles were not fixed, after I told them in January to fix nine vehicles. I don't know, I don't know the answer.
Can you send us the plan that you sent him?
Sure, I'll send it right now.
Send us a plan that he was sent.
That Jeremy sent, the sheriff.
Okay.
I mean, and you want us to increase minimums of fifty-five, we can't afford that, we can't.
I think you need to address compression.
Yeah, and we're spending too much money.
You need to address compression, not starting salary.
Budget and money to do that, that's.
We do not.
You know, that's obvious for this county, so you can't do that.
Yeah, and he wants us to continue to go into reserves, I would never recommend that for salary increases, never.
Cause you know, we, we, what we are asking for is stuff that's long, that's continual.
Mm-hmm.
Recurring, recurring.
So what would it look like, I'm just, this hypothetical question. If we ever had, you talking about reserve, that wouldn't cut my attention. Um, if we ever had another COVID int, uh, situation, which we might, what would we look like? You know, cause that brought down, people couldn't work, people wasn't spending.
Yeah.
And it took a toll.
Agreed.
On the county, and I think we forget that those things that we also have to play, taking consideration.
Absolutely.
That when you're talking about reserve and tapping and stuff, cause we don't know, cause nobody never expected COVID.
That's right.
And I think that we still gotta think smart.
Mm-hmm, agree.
Know what's gonna happen.
Yeah.
And, and there could be another one down the road.
That's true.
Situation.
That's true.
Um.
And then also you think about the capital projects that we have, how much money that we're spending in um overtime pay in the jail to staff the jail.
That's a lot, a lot.
Renovations for the jail.
That's why I said, we spending a lot.
We just don't have the money, yeah.
In the system, that's taken away from the um increase in salaries.
Yeah.
My.
It does seem like what I'm hearing then, based on Jeremy, what you're saying in terms of recommendations, but Dan says for, that this is what we can do, and this is all we can do.
Compression, that's it.
This is all we can do.
That's all we can do, and I don't, but I don't want the expectation that the deputies think they're getting ten or fifteen thousand dollars either, cause it's not gonna be that much.
You get a lot of money, yeah.
So based on what you just said in terms of compression, based on what Jeremy, this, this is the bottom line.
We can only look at compression.
Mitchell's, Mitchell's plan, while the numbers may not have been totally accurate, he went through with individuals in the department, and based on what they were doing, it would have made those individuals whole as far as market. And so that was, that was, you know, we, I, I spent a lot of time with him on that, going through it.
So the issue that I saw with that plan is that you're, he was, he has a deputy been there for ten years, and if they were to get promoted, they would lose money.
Mm-hmm.
According to that plan, because there is, it's only based upon in that position for a certain amount of years. So we're gonna have to adjust compression, so you're gonna have to make it that you get some kind of, of merit-based raise on evaluation every single year to make you go up, because only we can go up right now, like I said, it's still a cola or promotion. And you can't promote everybody. You know, so it's, it's gonna be those things, we're gonna have to adjust compression based upon training and experience, that's why I send that incentive pay over from Edgecom that they use.
So Renee, what he's talking about is just, is that workable?
Yeah, but it's gonna take some time, because.
I figure you can't do it overnight.
Absolutely not, no, because we need everybody's application to be able to assess their education, their experience, before we can um start to look at it.
That's the only way we can move forward, back to what Kelly said, we can't keep discussing everything, we've gotta put some in place and move forward.
Agreed.
You may not like it, you may not like it, but you know.
I would.
And it's not gonna, and it's not gonna, it's not gonna address starting salary either.
Yeah, right.
And compression.
The incentive plan would address it if they put it in place.
We need to retain staff.
Correct.
Yeah.
We need to retain the experience.
Agreed, agreed.
Not even keep having train people over and over and over, and these training grounds, and they're gonna leave, but we gotta be able to retain our staff.
Yeah, and I think, like I was telling the sheriff, he's not taking any consideration, the amount of money that we're already spending in his office.
Yeah, that's.
That's my concern, we're spending a lot of money in his office.
Well, let's just come up with a plan, and this is all we can do, and let's move forward.
I'm fine with it.
Positions that aren't necessarily warranted, then maybe those salaries could.
If he would be willing to give positions up, then y'all could dedicate that salary to it.
I'm just talking, within that department, there probably some positions that to go away.
I know, but most of them are deputies, so I don't know if he wanna give up any deputies, I think that's.
I might definitely.
Oh, other positions, oh, vacant ones?
I don't know.
Oh, okay.
Well, listen, okay, I didn't mean to do that, but I just, you know.
Yeah.
I don't wanna keep coming, I don't want it to keep coming before us and everything, and you know, saying he need, he need, he need, and that just, and not being done what needs to be done. Um, at least if we have some type of plan, it's better than no plan at all.
Agreed.
People need to realize as well, if it's an issue that we are not saying no, or we're not, we're not saying anything, we're just trying to evaluate what we have, but we're looking at the whole picture, and like you said, and not, the money that we're putting into that county, I mean, to the, to the sheriff department, fixing a facility that nobody has handled administration, make sure that it's functioning properly, to the point where um, it feel like the board, I don't want people to think the board is not willing to do their part.
Right.
That need to be known, it's not the board.
Right.
We are putting a lot of money into um the detention center, that's the issue.
You, you wait till those payments kick in for the new jail. You think you're spending money now.
Well, it probably equal out to what we're putting out there in the old.
Yeah. Over time.
Over time, what we keep fixing the same issues in the.
Over and over.
Over and over, and some of these things can be, um.
So what are we going to do now?
So, um, I would recommend that you all allow us to work with the sheriff to um devise a plan for compression for his um sworn staff only. And bring back to this board, I don't wanna say October, so I'm gonna say your November meeting, because we'll have to dedicate some time to it.
That's the plan, that's, that's the work we're planning, let's go.
Yeah.
Okay. Compression only right now.
Thank you.
All right, and so the next thing on your agenda is just for you all to have discussions on what you want your opioid committee to look like. Uh, in twenty twenty-three, when Yolanda, Ms. Feenster was chair, the committee was Ms. Fains, um, former Commissioner Austin and Ms. Feenster. And we had our annual opioid meeting last year in September, and after that meeting, some commissioners made recommendations on what that committee should look like, and I've included some makeup of some other committees throughout the state. Uh, I think I did Person, Halifax County, Granville County, and I think that's it, I think it was just three of them. But um staff's recommendation, of course, if you all want, um, of course commissioners on the committee, but I do believe we need someone from the Health Department, someone from Emergency Services, um, someone from possibly Via Health, um, someone from, uh, maybe a person with lived experience on the committee, um, and maybe other community organizations, but if you all want to go the direction of someone with lived experience, I would actually recommend some type of application process um for that, just because we don't just wanna choose anyone. So, but of course, for anyone that is Health Department, I can reach out to Lisa Harrison, um, I can reach out to Elliot Clark. He actually sent me a text message today, um, showing interest in being on the committee. Um, Law Enforcement, I would get with the sheriff, EMS I could get with Javier, DSS I can get with Cassandra. Um, and if you all want somebody from the court system, you all let me know, but I'm just looking for a direction for y'all of what you all want this board to look like. I definitely think it should be expanded other than just three commissioners, so that's my recommendation for sure. I said, I think it should be more than just three commissioners, which was the original plan.
People that you just.
Yes, ma'am, mm-hmm.
What you just named.
Yeah, and so I know we're not gonna get into spending plans or anything like that today, but um I also included examples of what other counties have done with their opioid funds, they funded positions, I know Halifax County did their community paramedic, Edgecom County did their community paramedic, which we have not been able to fill our community paramedic because of the salary. Um, some other counties have done RFPs, solicit competitive proposals to support the initiatives. Um, some people have done the co-responder model in which someone's in the sheriff's office, um, or someone's actually in the jail doing MAT services. And um some other counties have actually improved access to treatment for people that don't have the financial or transportation access to it. So I'm just looking for direction for the committee only today.
And I think, in my opinion, when we find these individuals that will be a part, that we would call a meeting, and then we, as a whole, sit down and see what, what best benefit they can.
Uh, yes, ma'am, and then the commi, and the recommendations come back to the entire board, the, the decision is still with the board of commissioners, yes, ma'am.
That's what I'm saying, if once, um, cause you're, you're looking for directions, so I'm just saying, I would like whoever these people from each of these entities be a part to help make the decision, and see where the, what best benefit, um, you know. And I know when I talked to Feenster today, she still wanna stay on.
Okay, Yolanda does.
Yeah, it's, cause she, when she called me about.
What?
I said, when I talked to Yolanda, Commissioner Feenster today, she told me she wanted to stay on the um opioid committee. And I know we had said Fain because of the fact of her being a registered nurse for.
Yes.
Um, twenty-five, twenty-five years.
Mm-hmm.
Did you say we need more, one committee?
It's up to y'all how many commissioners y'all want, that's, that's the decision that y'all wanna make.
I very much like to be on, I mean, I've been.
We're trying to take Fain, Feenster, and Dan.
So three commissioners?
Three commissioners. So that's, that's been one of Dan's things and everything, so he's been involved in it, so then expand it, I think it should expand it, so.
Okay, so have Commissioner Feenster, Commissioner Fain, and Commissioner Brummett.
Okay.
Okay, and so for the Health Department, I can reach, are y'all okay with a representative from the Health Department?
So Leo, how are you just gonna take me off?
Oh, you took, you took Carolyn off.
You get to be on anyway.
Uh, no, no, I'm just.
Uh, cause then we'll have four, then it'll be a quorum, we only need three, we only, we only need three commissioners, because then we'll have quorum if we have four.
Yeah.
You wanna be on again?
No, I'm just messing, go ahead. No, you got, um, Feenster won.
Those three. I'm sorry, walked over.
I said, I thought my name was on that paper.
It was, it was. Okay, so let me just get my consensus one more time, Ms. Feenster, Ms. Fain, and Commissioner Brummett, right? Okay, so we have three commissioners. Health Department, I'll get with Lisa Harrison, are you okay with someone from Via Health, Elliot Clark? Okay, y'all okay with that? Um, Law Enforcement, I'll get with the sheriff, y'all okay with the sheriff, with the sheriff's office? It's up to y'all.
Having one from each of those areas?
Well, I, I do prefer someone from Law Enforcement, EMS, and DSS, we don't have to have anyone from the courts. But I do, I do believe that Law Enforcement is heavily involved EMS and DSS, we definitely need a representative from each of those.
Yeah, definitely, I mean, the.
No, those are just examples for, for court and for re-injury, we don't have to.
No, I mean, I, the, the re-injury programs, I mean, that's um, the courts need to be involved.
Mm-hmm, I was thinking that as well, so I can get with um the DA, to see if he wants to, or, yeah. Okay, and I don't want the committee to be too big, but um I think it would be good, because we need everybody at the table, for sure. I agree.
The whole county.
I agree, and so as far as service providers, we could do an application process for that, if y'all want someone on that committee.
So, what do you want, two service providers, what are you talking?
That's up to y'all.
I mean, I, you run the risk of getting a committee, if you've got thirty people on the committee.
Oh, I don't, yeah, right, I don't want it too big.
Got something that's not functioning.
I don't want it too big, I mean, but we can have subcommittees of the committee as well.
But, and so that's, that, that's where I've, I, I think, and in Granville County, I think they ended up with like just fifty people at a meeting.
Yeah, it's, um, I have it, I think I have it on here, I think Granville, Granville has, yeah, they do have a lot of people.
Yeah.
They even have somebody from the municipal side as well.
Right.
They do, they do.
Which Henderson's gonna do their own thing, right?
Um, they are, but they have reached, Hassan did, I talked to Hassan today, and he did say that he would like to, um, he's coming to our meeting, our annual meeting, I don't know if he's gonna speak or not, but, I don't know, but they um actually did a RFP process and gave fifty thousand dollars of their money to Recovery Alive, they did a RFP process, so. I mean, but you know, of course, they can still participate if they, if they wanted to. Okay, so let me go back, Law Enforcement, EMS, DSS, and someone from the courts. Um, so do y'all want a service provider, want to do application process for a service provider?
I would think at most, two.
Two, okay, and community organizations?
Probably the same thing.
Okay.
One or two.
Okay, and maybe two with lived experience, okay, so we'll just do an app, Kelly, we will, Kelly and Dewanda, we'll do an application process for those. Okay, so the committee could possibly have three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, nine plus six, no more than fifteen. Okay.
I was thinking thirteen.
Well, if we get two from, um.
Each one of service.
Yeah, mm-hmm.
You got fifteen?
Mm-hmm, okay, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen. Wait a minute, hold on, maybe I counted wrong, six, hold on, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, cause three commit, fifteen, mm-hmm, cause three commissioners, yes. Okay, all right, and so um that's all of the discussion today, but hopefully the application, um, we can get the application process started and advertised tomorrow or this week sometime. Anybody have any thoughts, any more thoughts about the committee? And what we'll do is set that meeting after our annual meeting, because you all probably won't appoint anyone until maybe your September, October meeting anyway, depends on how the applications come in. So, any additional thoughts? No, okay.
So you're gonna reach out to these individuals just to see if they wanna be on, but the only one gonna do an application is the.
Service provider.
Service provider.
Community organizations and individuals with, yes, ma'am, mm-hmm. So what I'll do is I've already been in contact with Lisa, I know she's probably going to appoint. Granville County is funding half of the position for um the Health Department, so I'm, I'm pretty sure I know who she's gonna send. I know Elliot is gonna be the representative, he's already asked me. I'll reach out to the sheriff, Javier, I'm pretty sure it'll be those two, and I'll reach out to Cassandra with DSS and somebody from the courts, yes, ma'am, yep.
Need somebody from the hospital?
Well, they could be a part of the um maybe service provider, yeah, they'll just have to do an application process, yes, sir. Okay.
So what you think it'd be to turn around to get all these people, you said by next?
I'm thinking that y'all probably appoint them at your October meeting, cause we need to have it advertised at least for a month. So I'm, I'm assuming appointment is gonna probably be at your October meeting, mm-hmm. And then we'll set a, um, the first initial meeting for October sometime, cause we definitely need to start spending some funds, and there's some other um, um settlements that are coming through that I'll bring to you all at your September meeting for you all to authorize me to execute those agreements and participate in getting additional funding, but we'll do that in, at the September meeting, so, but right now we have two point four million dollars.
Over a total, over eighteen years, we're at what, six point three?
Six point three, mm-hmm, and it could be possibly more with these new settlements.
Okay.
Mm-hmm, we'll get this money through twenty thirty-two.
It's a whole.
But it's, it's front end loaded, so.
Yes, it's heavy on, mm-hmm, we already two point four in.
After that, I, I don't think we'll get less than three hundred thousand a year.
Yeah, that's about right.
So we got to be careful about what we.
Yeah, yeah, and that's why um the association said don't necessarily be in a rush to spend your money, just make sure it's benef, beneficial to your community when you spend it, yeah. Okay. That was productive.
So we'll have any other business that's necessary, is it?
No, ma'am.
So being a jury.
We're done.